Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, November 28, 2023 at 5:30 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Pastor Jesse Cano from Living Word Family Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by the River Riders MC, Mr. Paul Blazer.
In Jeremiah 29:7, the Lord tells Jeremiah, "To seek the peace and the prosperity of the city to which I have carried you; pray to the Lord for the city. Because of it, it will prosper, and you too will prosper." Heavenly Father, we lift up, Lord, first of all, the peace of your city, Jerusalem, and we also lift up, Lord, our city, Lake Havasu City. Keep us, Lord, under the shadow of your wings. Keep us under the shadow of your protection, Lord, Father. We thank you, Lord, Father, as you bless our city. Lord, we ask that you bless also our elected city officials, our city council, our mayor, Lord, Father. We ask, Lord, that you anoint this council, Lord, anoint them with your wisdom, anoint them with knowledge, Lord, Father. We ask that you give them the ability to discern right from wrong, justice from injustice, and truth from falsehood. Extend this anointing to our elected justices of peace, our law enforcement, our first responders, Lord, Father. And we just think and we ask this in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, Mr. Blazer. Thank you for being here.
Why, thank you. For those that don't know me, obviously they do. My name is Paul Blazer. I am the president of the River Riders Motorcycle Club. The River Riders Motorcycle Club was established here in Lake Havasu City in 1976, almost 48 years ago, by like-minded individuals like myself who enjoy riding and sharing in the brotherhood of events together and having fun times and creating memories on the road. Our club has a long history putting on and participating in events that help benefit local charities and individuals in need. One of our more well-known events coming up is our annual toy run. This will be the 40th year of putting on this, a great milestone of the event, and it has grown to draw hundreds, if not thousands, of participants from near and far. The event will take place this Sunday, December 3, with the event encompassing a parade ride from Pirate's Den in Parker to the final destination on McCulloch Boulevard's Main Street, arriving at about 1 o'clock. Participants in the event bring a toy or two to be collected at the conclusion of the ride. We will work with the Havasu City Community Health Foundation Food Bank to distribute the toys to local families in need, making sure that no child goes without a toy at Christmas in Lake Havasu City. As in the past, we will have live music, a beer garden, food, a 50/50 drawing, and more. This year, all the proceeds from the beer garden sales will go to the New Horizons Center here in Lake Havasu. Additionally, we are proud to partner with the city at the annual community dinner, supplying lots of toys for the children to receive when seeing Santa. It gives our members great pride and warms our hearts to be able to give back to the community that we are part of and have been established in for almost five decades. We look forward to many more years of community involvement and helping wherever, whenever, and whoever we can. Thank you for the opportunity to open tonight's meeting, and we hope to see you and the whole community out to see all the beautiful motorcycles on December 3 on Main Street as we bring in the season of giving. Everyone is welcome to donate. Happy holidays to all.
Thank you, Paul. And thank you for all the work that your organization does for our community. We appreciate it. All right, moving on to item four is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell, here. Michelle Lynn, here. Cameron Moses,
here.
Jenny Koch,
here.
Jim Dolan,
here.
Vice Mayor David Lane,
here.
Mayor Kalshih,
here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is the consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
Move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item six is correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. Item 6.1 is to announce the vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor, City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, two regular members and two alternate members, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one student member. Anyone interested can pick up an application packet at the City Hall, or they are available on the city's website at lhcaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.2 is the city manager's report. Good evening, Mr. Knudsen.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I would like to start the manager's report with some special recognition we have for three of our heroes that work for Lake Havasu City. Just a couple of weeks ago, our parks employees, our park maintenance technician, John Schwing, and Andrew Hartman, and maintenance specialist Tyler McCoy were hanging up lights at Wheeler Park, and without going into too many details, they saved an individual from an attempted suicide. We are sensitive to this event, but at the same time, we are grateful to our employees for their quick action and heartfelt care for all members in our community, and they deserve to be recognized. By the way, if you know someone who is experiencing a mental health crisis, get connected to support by calling or texting the 988 lifeline. With that, Mayor, I think you have something special for our three hero employees? If John, Andrew, and Tyler would like to come up front?
So, Lake Havasu City has many heroes that work among our ranks, and we are so honored to be able to honor and recognize your achievements. As Jess mentioned, all three employees are of the Lake Havasu City Parks and Recreation Department. We're thankful for them and also for their leadership team, including Mike Keen, the Parks and Recreation Director, Guy Reynolds, the Park Superintendent. We also have our maintenance leads Carl Toth and Gary Waldorf, and the field supervisor, Tim Rodriguez, for sharing the story with my office. So, they were excited to share the story, and obviously, when we heard about it, we knew we had to do something to recognize what you had done. I actually happened to be driving by, leaving City Hall and heading down towards the resort at that time, and actually saw just to know what was happening. I just knew there was a lot of commotion. So, amazing work that you all do unexpectedly. So, John, Andrew, and Tom, on behalf of a grateful city, I, the mayor of Lake Havasu City, and the city council, and the citizens of Lake Havasu would like to express our gratitude for your life-saving heroics. Lake Havasu City is a community that chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals within our community who go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and also service. We're extremely proud of your quick response and unselfish act to save the life of a fellow citizen. You are all true heroes in our community, and we're proud to have you on the Lake Havasu City team. So, therefore, today, I'm going to present each of you with a certificate, but also a key to the city, which is the highest honor that we offer through Lake Havasu City. Well, it's not a real key to the city. It does symbolize the real key to the many hearts of Lake Havasu City that are thankful for your heroic act of saving a valued life of our community. So, thank you so much and congratulations. And then if we could have Mike Keen and Guy and the supervisor team come join us. The council, if you want to come around and join as well, we'll take a photo. Yeah, we're gonna have to all get together, and we'll stack it up tall and back, shorter in front. Yeah, we good? Did we make it?
Thanks again to our heroes. Appreciate all your efforts and what you did for Lake Havasu City. Next, I'd like to share with the community and the council about our one new police boat and our one new fireboat that was just delivered a few weeks ago. The new fireboat, which is pictured on the bottom two pictures, is equipped with cutting-edge technology and advanced firefighting and emergency medical capabilities, and is a vital asset in our efforts to enhance emergency response operations on the lake. The new police boat, which is on the top two pictures, replaces the current aging fleet, which allows us to patrol our area of responsibility, which as a city is the Bridgewater Channel, but we also respond promptly and effectively to emergencies on the water to assist other law enforcement agencies. The acquisition of both these boats was possible due to Arizona State Lake Improvement Fund, or SLIF, which exemplifies the state's commitment for public safety. And I just have to recognize and thank Representative Biassucci and Senator Borelli for supporting SLIF funds for Lake Havasu City. On behalf of the mayor's office, Vice Mayor David Lane, you attended a special presentation for retired Police Chief Dan Doyle, sponsored by Daughters of the American Revolution, where he received the Havasu Chapter DAR Distinguished Citizen Medal, which exemplifies honor, service, courage, leadership, and patriotism. Congratulations to you, Dan Doyle. And Mayor, you and Vice Mayor David Lane, attended Havasu Pioneer Eunice Wernberg's 100th Birthday, proclaiming the day in her name and giving her a key to the city and thanking her for many years of friendship to Lake Havasu City. There's a special coffee with the mayor this week, and it's not just because I won't be there. It's because the mayor will be joined by Fire Chief Pete Palafas and Police Chief Troy Sterling. That'll take place this Friday, which is December 1, starts at 8:30 a.m. and will end at 10 a.m. Members of the community are encouraged to attend, to learn more about what's happening in the city, and get answers to any questions they have about current and future projects or activities. This came up on us very quickly. The entire community is cordially invited to attend the 20th Annual Free Community Dinner, which takes place on Friday, December 8, at the Aquatic and Community Center. That's just one week from Friday. The team is offering two different serving times again. Their early bird serving is at 4 p.m. The doors open for that at 3:30, and the second serving is at 6 p.m., and the doors are open for that service at 5:45. Both servings are first come per serve, and we can feed up to 500 people per seating. The dinner hosted by the community, for the community, provides a relaxed atmosphere to share a traditional holiday feast with family, friends, neighbors, and anyone who just wants a dose of great community spirit. Thanks to numerous volunteers, donors, and local business sponsors, this event grows every year for the last 20 years. The turkeys, which was a coordinated effort by Vice Mayor David Lane through Albertsons, who donated the turkeys at cost, and funds were raised through donations by the London Bridge Rotary Club, Lake Havasu Rotary Club, Sunrise Rotary Club, Daybreakers Lions Club, and Kiwanis of Lake Havasu. The turkeys and the food will be prepared and cooked by Tahoe Food Service and prepared by Master Chef Christopher Galaga and Wave Culinary Hospitality Students. The meal will include turkey, ham, potatoes, and gravy, stuffing, dinner rolls, vegetables, and a choice of pie for dessert, which is donated by Smith's Food and Drug Grocery Store. As Paul Blazer mentioned earlier, Sam will be making a special appearance at both servings, and he will be bringing toys for girls and boys. Again, special thanks to the River Riders Motorcycle Club. Havasu Pick, sponsored by Anderson Auto Group, is onsite for both servings to capture all your memories. If anybody in the community is interested in volunteering for this event, please visit the city's website at lhcaz.gov/volunteer. And/or you can with a phone call over to our Parks and Recreation Department at 453-8686. And then Reminder, the Republic Services is hosting a free residential household hazardous waste event that'll take place on Saturday, December 9, from 8 a.m. to 12 o'clock at Fire Station 2, which is located on Kiwell Boulevard. We encourage all of our residents to take advantage of this opportunity. Dispose of your tires, your oils, anything that doesn't belong in our landfills or in our trash containers will be accepted at this event. And with that, Mayor and Council, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. All right, we'll move on to item seven, which is our public hearings. During our public hearings, we will have the opportunity to hear from citizens on each of the items. When you make your way to the podium, when we open the public hearing, just state your name for the record, and you'll be directing your comments directly to the city council. So, there is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have time. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that your time is up for the testimony. When you are giving your comments, or if you're here for one of those items, we do encourage you to talk during that time, so we can have a two-way conversation. At the end of the meeting, we will have a call to the public, where we can just listen intently, but we can't have a two-way conversation, and I'll review the guidelines when we get to that section of the meeting. But we'll start with item 7.1, which is a Class B bingo license application for the VFW Post 9401 Auxiliary. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Ms. Lonnie Munn has applied for a Class B bingo license for VFW Post 9401 Auxiliary. The applicant is applying for a new bingo license with games of bingo to be played Mondays and Tuesdays from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. at the VFW Post 9401, located at 266 London Bridge Road. There is currently one active bingo license at this location that is issued to the VFW Post 9401. The application was reviewed internally, and no objections were received. The applicant is in attendance and is here to answer any questions from the city council.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Munn, did you want to make any comments?
Well, first of all, I wanted to-
You could just hit the microphone. There should be a red button in the center of that platform, and it should turn green?
It was on.
Oh, perfect. Okay, then. Just lift it up. Perfect.
I didn't think you needed me to use the microphone. I'm pretty loud.
The folks at home want you to, though, yes.
Thank you, first of all, for allowing us to do this. You know, we work very hard to earn all of our money for our veterans in Lake Havasu, and we do the veterans, the children of the veterans. We do as much as we can do. I know last year, we gave over 50 flags to our boats on the water for the Sheriff's Department and the police. So, it's hard-earned money, and we need all the help we can get to earn some of this money. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Fantastic. Are there any questions from any members of the council, for Ms. Williams or for Ms. Munn? Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, thank you. First of all, thank you for all that you do. Absolutely love your organization there. So, this is a second bingo license? You currently have one there? Is that what I heard?
We don't have one. The post has one, and this will be for the auxiliary.
For the auxiliary, great. And this will be traditional bingo, or is this the gaming?
This is the gaming bingo. But we also do the dumper bingo, and they can play it, either machines, or we have it available at the bar. They can play regular bingo.
Okay. And has... So, have you had these machines in your organization before?
Yes, they exist today.
They exist today, right? Okay. And it's a successful thing for you, and it's working out?
Yes, thank goodness. They really, really are, because, you know, we have some slow times in our post. Of course, our winter visitors make up for a lot of that, but in the summertime, it's rather, we really rely on all of those funds.
Awesome. All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from members of the council? All right, this is-
Well, right, it is. We have two days as the auxiliary and five days at the post, so we only have two days, if that clarifies for you.
Yeah, so the way that these current bingo licenses work is they can be stacked with different nonprofits being attached to it. So, the auxiliary is going to be doing two days, and then the post is doing five days. So, they stack them that way to be able to earn money through this mechanism. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council? Yeah, please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name's Dennis Ticky, and I am the quartermaster for VFW Post 9401. Most of you know me already. This is an opportunity for the auxiliary to be able to join the VFW in preparing and receiving funds for our veterans out there. We do a lot of programs that are designed specifically for these veterans on it, and it's going to be a huge step for us, and we welcome them aboard for it, to do that.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Revenue approve a Class B bingo license for VFW Post 9401 Auxiliary at 266 London Bridge Road.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the next two items, item 7.2 and 7.3, I'm going to recuse myself, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor David Lane.
I gotta lift that seat up. He's way too tall. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this item 7.2 will be to approve a maintenance agreement with the London Bridge Resort LLC regarding maintenance responsibilities in the Bridgewater Channel. Ms. Carey?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. There are a couple items that seem to resurface every couple of years between the city and the London Bridge Resort relating to maintenance activities. The parties have a really great relationship and were able to work through these issues, but every time we rehash the history, we talk about past agreements and past actions, and so this proposed agreement will provide the intent of the parties moving forward while streamlining maintenance activities and delineating the responsibilities of the party. There's three main maintenance areas that this agreement covers. It covers the southeastern portion of the Bridgewater Channel, which is when you exit Rotary, when you're walking towards the bridge, up until a part where the walkway comes down from the convention center. The city would take care of the maintenance in this area, which would include trash removal, sidewalk cleaning, maintenance of the trees and benches, maintenance of the gabion baskets, lighting, weed abatement, and bathroom maintenance. The second area is the stage area under the London Bridge, including both stairwells on each side. The resort would take care of the maintenance in this area, including trash removal and the cleaning of the stairs, walkways, and the stage area. The third area is the fence that separates Rotary Park and the golf course, and under this agreement, the resort would take care of that fence. Most importantly, though, for the city, this agreement is the pathway to obtain an easement for the property along the channel that's adjacent to the resort's own property for public access. Long, long ago, when the channel was dug, there was an intent in the historical documents that there would be an easement along the sides of the channel that would provide public access. Although this intent is found in many different documents, the actual easements were never made and recorded, and so the city has taken every opportunity that it can over the years to obtain easements along the channel. And so, this is our opportunity now to obtain easements on that portion that's right in front of the resort. This is important because it allows the public to access or walk through that area, which obviously is important to our citizens and visitors. It's a heavily traversed area and important to all of the businesses and just to enjoy the lake and the channel in that area. The proposed agreement is for a term of 20 years commencing on December 1, but either party can terminate within 180 days' notice. To facilitate the resort providing maintenance activities on city-owned property, there's also companion item, which is the next item on the agenda, which is a lease agreement between the city and the resort. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Carey. I think for myself, one of the most important parts on this is the easement. Several months ago, if you recall, we made a commitment here on this council that we were going to maintain public access to the waterfront and the beachfront properties all around the lake. We did that with a resolution out on the island. This is the next piece of that puzzle. A lot of people don't realize that the whole east side of the channel is actually governed by the London Bridge Resort and not the city. And we use that, but we don't have any legal access to it. So, by doing this easement, we now have legal access, and we make sure that that property stays open to our citizens and to our visiting public. When it comes to the maintenance, if you've ever been down there, sometimes you'll see the guys doing the trash, and they get to a certain point, and they turn around and they go back the other direction. That's because the city is doing part of it, and the London Bridge Resort is doing part of it. With this agreement, we will now have our parks people empty all the trash along the channel, all the way up to where the resort starts, and in return, the resort is going to clean under the bridge and the stage area and the stairwells. And if you've ever been over there, sometimes those stairwells get a little sticky from people spilling stuff, and we have brand-new concrete down there. So, it just evens up that agreement, so that both parts and both parties are doing their work. So, with that said, does anybody on the council have any questions for Ms. Carey or the applicant?
Councilmember Lynn?
So, I'm happy to see this agreement with the easement, but I think I'm confused with the, under B, resort agrees to maintain the area described in Exhibit, to include the stairs and the walkways. So, if we agree to this, then are we obligated on the next item to agree to that lease? I just, I think I'm confused. If this goes through and it passes, and the lease doesn't pass, are they still obligated to take care of this?
Ms. Carey, can you answer that? I would think that's totally separate, so the vote is totally separate.
Well, they're companion items, and so the passage of one would require the passage of the second one, unless there's some other mechanism to facilitate that, but mostly because they're going to be doing work on city property for their insurance and workers' compensation purposes. They need some sort of arrangement with the city to kind of show that nexus.
So, I guess, still, I'm just asking. So, it's kind of, we're obligated to vote yes on the second item. If we vote yes on this, we're obligated to, because if we don't, then they won't, well-
They may not. I mean, I can't speak for them, and that's certainly a great question for the applicant, and they can respond to that, but-
That could happen. We could agree to this, and it says that they have to maintain this, the second item. If we don't do the lease with them, they still have to do this.
Well, they don't necessarily, just because we approve it doesn't mean that the other party has to sign it. So, council could approve it and not approve the next item, the companion item. We go back and then negotiate again further with the other party and determine whether or not that was possible.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
Please.
Councilmember Campbell? Point of clarification, please. According to Exhibit A, it says city maintenance, and it shows it attaches from pretty much all the way down along the channel, and it stops prior to hitting the resort. On Exhibit B, it says resort maintenance, and then you see the continuation of that point going around to the bridge in question. So, just a point of clarification, am I reviewing this properly, that we do stop our maintenance at the point of Exhibit B?
The city's maintenance is shown on A, and so that's the point in which you exit Rotary Park and kind of where that walkway comes down from the convention center. So, that is the portion that the city will maintain.
Right. And then the second portion that we see is what the resort will continue to maintain. Thank you much.
Yep.
And that is the easement portion. Okay. All right. Councilmember Moses?
I heard you say that we'll have, both entities can have 180 days to void this contract, this agreement, but that won't void the easement. The easements will be there in perpetuity, no matter what.
Correct. So, once we draft and enter into that easement, it won't be tied to this agreement or any other agreement.
Okay. No, if I may, Vice Mayor, this is one of those things, when I got on council, I was like, what? The city doesn't have that easement? The city doesn't have the right to maintain, to hold this, you know, valuable piece of property for our citizens to go use and all that. I mean, that's all owned by the London Bridge Resort, which, thank God, they've been such great actors leading up to this. And I just want to thank them for coming to the table on this and the willingness to make this situation right and to- make this situation right and to protect the access for all of Lake Havasu. A lot of times as a city, you only get one shot at this, and this was never followed through in the first place. And so the fact that they're willing to come back and make it right and to do right by the citizens, I just want to commend the resort. And I want to thank them for being willing negotiators in this agreement, and thank
Any other comments before I open up the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on this item? Please step up to the microphone and the light indicator box will start with green, go to yellow, and then when you're done, when it's red.
Hello, my name's Mark Zief, resident eight years. I just want to make sure that the dog-walking rule is going to stay the same, because I know you're not allowed to have dogs at Rotary. People use the east side of the channel to walk their dogs. Can anyone clarify on that? That's a critical issue for a lot of dog owners.
Yeah, this does not change that whatsoever. We do have an ordinance where you cannot have dogs in Rotary Park. Rotary Park doesn't start until the end of the channel, so...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that this doesn't have stipulation in it where it says, okay, now, since the city's going to be patrolling that, he don't want to clean up dog poop, so he's going to talk to his supervisors, and in a year and a half or two years from now, there's going to be no dogs on the east side of the channel. You know, that's what I was afraid of, since it is city. So anyway, thanks for clarifying that up. And then just a real simple, I was at a meeting this morning when Cal was explaining this, and I just want to thank him for being a great steward and coming forth. I think it's great. And just to clear up what I understood, city owns under the bridge, Cal owns along the east channel, not Cal, London Bridge Resort, sorry.
That'd be Mr. Flatley who's sitting here in the...
So in order to go over and clean one versus the other, they're just basically swapping maintenance responsibilities. That way, insurance could be covered for workers. So anybody who's confused, it's real easy in black and white, and I just thank the London Bridge for doing that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments.
It's good to see all of you. Happy holidays.
You too. Anyone else like to address council? Please make your way to the microphone.
Hello, my name is Daniel Finch, resident for 34 years, spelled F-I-N-C-H. This concerns me, the fact that there is a little confusion from even council members. This came up very, very quickly with no public notice, no anything. I have a direct, I'm impacted directly by this, being an owner of a business on the other side of the bridge in the English Village. And we were shocked that this came up so quickly. And what I'm, my questions are, if the London Bridge Resort, we need that easement, right? You need their permission and to clear that up. If the city owns the land under the bridge, why do we need to lease to the London Bridge Resort to create the easement? The city already owns that property. The easement is already there. So I agree with the easement on the channel. I think we need to protect that access 100%. The fence, all of that, except for that right underneath the bridge, because that directly impacts not just my business, but at least eight other businesses down there. The way that I read the agreement, again, is very quick, there's a lot of confusion. It seems to be very, very vague, and it concerns me a lot. There's no verbiage in there that limits the control that the London Bridge Resort will have over that city. They can have wedding receptions, they can hold whatever events they have. And the London Bridge Resort competes with every single business on the other side in the English Village. They can absolutely affect our business. Number one, if there was a wedding reception or some type of an event, nobody uses the London Bridge Resort parking lot to go to the stage under the bridge. They use the English Village parking lot. That's what we rely on. And if it is filled with cars and people from an event that the London Bridge Resort has, it negatively affects my business, it negatively affects my family, and it's a very real thing. Community events happen all the time down there. Community events don't happen every weekend, they happen for great causes. We've been members of this community for 34 years. We love this town. I chose to raise my family here and been a line-level employee, management at the London Bridge Resort. I worked there for 26 years. So this is not a personal vendetta at all against Flatley. Mr. Flatley has always taken good care of me. So I don't want this to become a personal thing. But community events like the duck derby, we just had a walk for dementia awareness and things like that, those are very short. They happen most of the time in the morning. But we're great community members, those things are important, and we don't mind the little bit of impact that that has. But if we are going to do full-blown wedding receptions or events that take six, eight, 10 hours, when you take setup and take down and all of the other, that really, really hurts our business, and we will have to pay. And besides that, if we're going to enter into a lease with the London Bridge Resort, why weren't we given the same option? I would love, love to lease waterfront property for the exact same price that's listed in the agreement, which is $0. I would love that option. You know, of course, and then the only obligation they have is to hose it down and take out the trash. I would love to do that, maybe at Rotary Beach and set up a hot dog stand or something. It just, it seems like this was really pushed fast, it was really rushed through, we had no idea, and this affects a lot more people than just the London Bridge Resort. So this is not a win-win. This is, the way it's worded is very vague. It is a win for the London Bridge Resort, it is a loss for each of the business owners in the village. And my questions are, is number one, why so fast? Number two, if this, if we need to do this for this particular piece of property under the bridge, why 20 years? Why does it have to be 20 years? That's like a land grab that I don't think anybody in here that owns a business would allow a competing business to have control of their parking lot for 20 years. It just really, really hurts us, it scares me. And going forward, if we enter into this lease, if we wanted to hold an event, we would have to, who permits it? The London Bridge Resort? We would have to get permission from our competitors to hold an event under the bridge? There's all these questions, the verbiage is not there. I would love for this to be tabled. That's it.
Thank you for your time. And let me clarify a few things. One, we kind of got into the next item, which is the companion item, which is the lease. So we'll talk about that when we get to there. This item is for them to do the maintenance on that property, not for the lease. That will be on the next item, and I don't want to confuse the two items. This is for our, the easement along the channel and who's going to clean underneath the bridge and the walkway. And then we'll talk about the rest of that when we get to the companion item, but I appreciate your comments. Next up, sir? Thank you.
Dallas Finch, been here 34 years as a resident. I also am co-owner of the business that my brother talked about. David, I'm sorry, the two are the same, because if one is passed, then the other has to pass. I don't think the London Bridge Resort is just going to sign up for 20 years to empty trash and maintain it. I just don't see it. I worked for them for a long time, 26 years. To me, again, we don't want to make it personal. I love the resort. I worked there for so long, but this, to me, like my brother says, seems like a power grab or a land grab. It affects a whole bunch of people. So I do want to ask, who authored it? Who brought it to council? Did council go, did the city go after the London Bridge Resort, or did the London Bridge Resort bring it up and say, hey, we want to do this?
Yeah, that was the city going to the London Bridge Resort and saying that we want to get this easement. With that easement, we would do the maintenance along the channel, but what are you going to give us in return? And they said that they would clean underneath the bridge and the stairwells. Like I said, I don't really want to get into the next item, and I understand they are companion items. This is a, the lease agreement, anything that happens on that bridge or underneath there, and we'll talk more about it in the next agreement, it still stays with the city. It does not go to the London Bridge Resort. It stays with the city. This is just, it will be a lease agreement, and like I said, we'll talk about that in the other item, I don't want to confuse the two. This is, so who's going to clean what? And the easement and some other items in there, such as putting a fence around a shed and that kind of thing.
Again, they are still intertwined. I believe that this should be tabled, and so we can get some clarification and get the citizens out there to know what's going on about their property down there, about entering into a lease. If you enter into a lease, reading it, it says that we have to, if we wanted to hold an event, we come to the city, right? We could come to the landlord and not the leasing?
It will stay the same as it is right now. This is just a lease.
So if I'm a competing business with the London Bridge Resort and I want to have an event that maybe they don't want, okay, maybe it's a conflict to them, we'd have to go to the city, correct?
That is correct. You go, everything will go through the city.
The city is mairied by the general manager of our competition. Can you see the conflict, a huge conflict? And because he recuses himself from the vote, doesn't mean that he doesn't benefit further down the road for 20 years.
I understand what you're saying. What I'm getting at is nothing is changing as far as permits go. When you want to have something under the bridge, and Ms. Gary, if I'm getting, because it's two separate items, please let me, because it's, you want to get a contract to have an event under the bridge, nothing goes through the resort. It all goes through the city and all fees are paid to the city, just like it is now. The whole reason for the lease agreement is so when the employees of the resort are cleaning off the bridge or the stage, the concrete under there and the stairways, they're covered under workman's comp.
David, I appreciate it. I don't want to eat up my time, because I have a lot of questions, okay? The also, I do have a letter or a deed of dedication dated 12 years ago, signed by the city attorney, and you were just starting out. And I will read it, it is from VRE that gifted it to the city, correct? And it says, and I need glasses these days, but it is, I'll just read it. "Conveys to Lake Havasu City Municipal Corporation of the State of Arizona, solely for public use and open space. All right, title, interest grant to a certain property situated in Mojave County, Arizona." Solely for public and open space. It doesn't say, and there's not an expiration on this, it doesn't say we can, that the city can enter into a lease with a competitor or any, I mean, why wasn't I, why wasn't I approached? Is it because you wanted this and they had it? And so you want, so they, it's a tit-for-tat thing? It just smells, it does. And the optics of it is horrible. So I moved to table it. I want to table this till we can get this straightened out. To have these things intertwined, they're not. As much as you try to do that, they are intertwined.
I took some of your time, so have you had another question?
Nope. With that, there's just so much, there's so much problems with this that I just want to table it, maybe for a week, two weeks. Let us, let me, like the owners of the village now, they had no idea. Okay, so if it were turned around, if I came and I said, hey, I want to lease the, under the bridge, I don't think the London Bridge Resort, I think the London Bridge Resort would be standing right where I'm at and contesting it, if it was turned around. And with that, that's all, I have a lot more, but...
We have another agenda item.
Mr. Vice Mayor? Can I just ask the city attorney? So we are, just to clarify, we are not legally obligated, I'm not forced to vote. If I vote yes on this one, I'm not forced to vote yes on the next one.
Correct.
Okay. So if I vote no on the next one, because when they're given their opportunity and we present the item about the lease and we get the details and we learn about it and we decide at that point, I can freely vote no. And it could fail, but there's still the agreement for them taking care of the channel, we still have public access, we still have public easement.
Yes, however you vote on either of these items, whatever the outcome is, the city will then get with the resort and will talk about whatever that outcome is and decide what the pathway is forward. If it frustrates the purpose and we aren't able to accomplish those things, we'll go back to the drawing board. This is something, though, that we've been working on in the city for over a year at this point in time, and it comes up because there are several issues. The easement is very important, but the fence is also important. The maintenance of the channel is also important. The maintenance of the stage is also important. There's not this underlying conspiracy that's going on. It's not to give any type of control under the stage to the resort. It really is, and it's simple because it is simple. It is to give them the right to go there and maintenance the property with respect to what they're agreeing to in the maintenance agreement. They'll have no control over events, they cannot host their own events there without going through the city's special event permit. As you all know, the mayor and city council have nothing to do with special event permit process, that all goes through the city, it will all be processed through the city. So I hear the concerns and I understand it, and I can only explain to you what the intent is and how we drafted and what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, thank you. Like I said, I just hope people realize they're two separate things. I think it's unfortunate that some people are going out in the community and giving you, Dallas and them, I hope you guys, hopefully in the next agenda item, we can discuss. Those questions are great questions, and I do agree, if what you said is true and what you're being told by certain people, yeah, those optics don't look good. Well, then let's discuss those when they come up and we can freely discuss them, but I'm afraid, you know, the information you may be given, people are just trying to rally you up because, oh, it's a conspiracy. So let's talk about the facts, let's look at everything, when that's the agenda item. And just to clarify, we're not legally obligated to force some vote, as other people are saying. So I'm just afraid that, you know, maybe you're not getting the information out in the community properly, and I think as council members, it's our job to have all the information and share it with everybody and not kind of skew it and get people to show up to meeting and be against something that we may be against. So I look forward to the next agenda item, and we can have all these discussions. I hope everybody in the audience that has a concern, get up, ask it. I'd love to get the questions about the weddings and all the other events. I think it's great to hear that all the special, it sounds like it's going to be exactly like it is right now, so nothing really changes, other than if an employee falls and they're covered by their workman's comp because they're on an access that they control. So hopefully we can get back on topic with that and have all these discussions when that next agenda item comes up. So thank you.
We're still under the public hearing comments. Is there anybody else who would like to address, before we bring it back to council for additional
Good evening, Ms. Kelly.
It's Bonnie.
Hi, I did have a question regarding the agreement. And that question is, for the maintenance of the stage area and the stairwell area on the other side of the resort, that is not currently managed by the resort, the London Bridge Resort, was the maintenance of that offered to ZMC Hotels?
Not to my knowledge.
Should it have been? Because that's, the stage is on half of each, it's in the middle of both sides, and from what I understand right now, the city is responsible for the maintenance of the stairwell, but for all these years, apparently, only the London Bridge Resort side was kind to clean the stairwell on that side, but the side that the, well, the city is responsible for both sides, which I don't understand why they didn't clean both sides and why the resort just only cleaned the resort side. The city doesn't clean the, I don't understand why the city doesn't clean the stairs at all. But why doesn't the ZMC Hotels clean the other side? Like, that would be fair and balanced. And why wasn't it offered to them?
That's your question?
Yes.
Okay. What we did is, when we were negotiating this contract, we said, okay, we're now going to have the cleanup of the channel, the city's going to do that all the way up to the resort. So the resort will no longer be responsible for the property along the channel, the city will now be responsible for that. So what we said was, resort, we're taking this over, so you don't have to do it anymore. What are you going to give us in return? And they said, we will clean... And they said, we will clean under the bridge and we will clean the stairs on the other side of the bridge. We will do that for you because you're doing this for us. So it was a, an agreement between them and us for them to take over the maintenance since we're taking over the maintenance in the channel that they no longer have to do.
Okay, but shouldn't the ZMC people still have some sort of opportunity to clean that side if they want?
If they want to come to us and say, hey, we just want to start cleaning up your side of the bridge, we're even more than happy to talk to them. But this way here, we had a little bit of leverage against the resort saying, hey, we're doing this for you. What are you going to do for us? That's how that came about.
Thank you.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, comment?
Yeah, let me finish with the call to the public first and then I'll bring it back to council. So is there anybody else in the public that would like to address the council on this issue? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Campbell?
I want to say when I get an agenda item, I do what I always do. I spoke with Mr. Keen over there that actually explained to me the whole, he was looking forward to the trade, number one. Number two, I reached out to some of the owners down at the bridge just to hear, are they interested in this? Do you know anything about it? And to my shock, nobody down there knew anything about this agreement other than myself and maybe a couple of us council members and mayor and what you see up here. So that was my concern for sure because if they came back to me and said, oh, no, we've been in negotiations for a year with the city and we're very, very comfortable with this agreement moving forward, this, this would have went away immediately. So they have all the right to know and I think what they're asking today is they still would like to move forward on a great conversations. And, but they want to be at the table and I think that's fair. That's all they're saying right now. But I do believe that these are two different ended issues. I don't know what's going to happen if we don't agree with the second one. I have some concerns about that, just verbiage issues, that I think if we had better communication and conversations with everybody at the table, this might have looked a whole lot better because we always talk about optics. Well, this looks really bad. When you get front page saying the London Bridge Resort is leasing underneath the bridge. And that is obviously read by many people to come up with that logic because that's what they, they didn't. I've read this thing 15 times. I probably can read it by, you know, probably know it by heart at this point because I've tried to dig into it every which way I possibly can as the emails came in and the phone calls came in. So with all due respect, I wasn't putting misinformation out there if people were thinking that. I was reaching out to constituents in the, in the community and asking if they've heard of it and how they feel about it. Nothing more. Thank you.
Councilmember Lynn?
Vice Mayor Lynn, I'm just curious, I, we're calling this a maintenance agreement. Is there, is there a reason why we can't separate the maintenance agreement with the exchange for the easement? Like I'm just, it looks like it's clumped together in here. And when I'm looking at maintenance agreement and then we start talking about the city granting an easement, that I understand the maintenance part of it, but couldn't it be separated? Because I'm really conflicted with this. If I, if I look at the second agenda item and it is a no, it's still telling me that they've agreed, that they're agreeing to keeping that stage clean, even if we don't provide a lease. Why, why do we need a lease? I mean, I, I think I heard a little bit something to do with workers' comp or something, whatever that is. It's, what's the reason for the lease? I know that's the next item, but that would help me understand this better.
Vice Mayor Lynn, Councilmember Lynn, if I can. The, the lease is required for workman's comp. So if you have, whether it's a city employee on, on the property that we don't have an easement for or a resort employee on property that they don't own and somebody gets injured, workman's comp, insurance and other liabilities come into place there. So that, that's, that is key to that, that approach. And if I can, in terms of, and I know we're, we're talking about the second portion of it, from a staff perspective, we've worked over a year to try to identify a public easement for access within the channel area that our residents probably already assume that they had access to. So that I'm honestly very excited about that aspect of it. So in perpetuity, the public will have access regardless of ownership of that, of that, of that property to enjoy it for, that's enjoyed the way it is today by connecting Rotary Park to the London Bridge. In terms of the, the lease agreement, which is the next item on the agenda, what there is truly no benefit to the other party with regards to that agreement. There's no, there's no benefit. There's no ability to host a special event more so or less so than any other interested party within Lake Havasu City. The, the difference between the two is that they are willing to maintain, they're willing to clean the stage area and both sides of the steps. Now, the city does clean the stairs on, on the, on the
North side.
North side, thank you. North side of that, of that property, but we can't do it to the same level that the resort does. So right now, our parks maintenance crews are out there emptying trash cans along the channel, stop where they stop and where the, the separation between the golf course and the, and the resort property starts. And then our parks maintenance staff are then lugging pressure washers and other equipment down to the bridge area and, and cleaning that area, lugging that equipment down. So if they could continue with the trash removal on, on the property on the south side of the channel and then allow the resort to utilize its existing equipment, they're, they've been honestly nice enough to clean those steps on the south side to a better degree or to a more, more often anyway, than the city can do it on the other, the steps on the north side. So that's part of that. It's easier for our parks maintenance crews to concentrate their efforts in one area. And it's easier for, than resort to clean the steps on the other side and that, and that stage area because they already have the equipment out in that, in that area. So that's really what it comes down to, right? And again, we have, the city does not have an easement up from Rotary Park to the bridge. We have no public access. Now, and, and, but we're still out there with the park maintenance crews that are emptying trash cans and, and doing work in that area. That's what our residents expect. That's what the tourists expect. But we don't have, the city is not on city property doing those things. That's state land property that's out by the, by the golf course. So that's also part of that conversation. But I did want to separate out the fact that the, the next item on the agenda is, is a companion item. But if another party wants to, to enter into a contract where you receive zero benefit in terms of events or hosting anything of the like, and your only obligation is to, is to clean the steps and, and under the stage area, then I don't think anybody else wants to step up and do that. As you indicated, Vice Mayor Lynn, it's a, we're, we're using this agenda item to, to negotiate the, the second item.
Mr. Vice Mayor, so I, I, maybe I need some understanding on the easement thing. So the reason we're leasing it to the London Bridge Resort is for liability. Now we're going to have city employees which are already on private property doing work, correct? What, what is our liability if one of our employees gets hurt on that property? Because if we're not, we're entering into a lease agreement with them, but they're not entering into, that's weird to say, but a lease agreement back to the city. So how does that work within easement?
They are. They're, they're giving us the easement. So that is basically the lease agreement for us to have that property. They're giving us that property.
So if someone gets hurt, one of our employees gets hurt on the easement, we're covered?
I, I would, it's one of those things that as a city manager, there should be zero instance where the city is spending taxpayer resources on proper, on private property or on property that, that we don't own. So one of the things we're trying to do is, is clean up that arrangement that's been happening for decades in Lake Havasu City with, with this approach. So that, that's key to it. Don't want to complicate things, but if you go from Rotary Park and you travel north, the, the golf course itself, that is, that is owned by Arizona State Land Department. So we need to work with Arizona State Land Department to get the public easement on that location as well. But, and one of the things we talked about, we've been working on this for over a year. Part of that is because we're trying to bring state land into the conversation on what that looks like. The resort has kindly agreed when the, the lease expires to have conversations with state land department on, on putting something into place at that time. And if the, in future years, whatever that looks like, if that state land property does sell, that party would come to the city and request a zoning. They're not going to buy it and operate a golf course for whatever that, that price of that property is, is valued at and is sold at. At that point, the city can require in return for any type of zoning action, public access along the channel. At that point, in perpetuity, you can go from Rotary Park to the bridge and it doesn't matter who the property owner, owners are in the, are there. You can, you can access that back and forth for your morning jogs or your leisurely afternoon walks or for different special events, those types of things. So is that helpful? But I, there is another party that's not, that's not part of these conversations tonight. That's the Arizona State Land Department. And we're really hoping to bring them into the fold, but, but we, we have a plan moving forward from that perspective and didn't want to hold up this process any longer.
Vice Mayor, one question?
Please.
Who, do we have a easement agreement on the other side of the ridge, all the way up to the, we do?
North side from the bridge north, we, there's an existing public access, an easement for public access already in place.
And how did we get that? Was that with the current owners or is, was it under like the same terms as this? Not exactly the same terms, but so for instance, when we entered into the development, the planned development with VRE, part of the exchange with that was for the public access. Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'm, I'm kind of amazed at this. I'd read it. I talked to city manager. I had questions about the lease agreement too. Does that mean that they can do these things? We can meet with the city manager and ask these questions before we go out in the community and give people wrong information. The only smoking gun is that they can have weddings and they can have this and they can have that. But we've also learned and we'll go into great detail, those are things they can't do. But I, the lease agreement, like I said, I had the question. I sat down with the city, city manager and I asked him, why are we doing the lease agreement? Oh, workman's comp. So I learned that prior to the meeting rather than riling up the community. And then all of a sudden, oh, for workman's comp, that makes sense. This is an amazing opportunity. We wanted to preserve public easement. We want, we want lake shore access. We, this is an amazing thing. And it's kind of like, oh, you do this part, we do this part and we're, we're kind of fixing it. And the, the thing under the bridge is also now it's one company and one company. And if we have any issues, it's, okay, you're responsible for this. On paper, it's really good. And unless we can punch any holes in the lease when it comes up, which I'm all for. Let's put it through the blender. Let's go and let's ask those questions because that's what, because then maybe we turn down the lease if that, if that's the case. But right now, this, everything I've seen so far, other than just the conspiracy theories, oh, it's the mayor and the resort and they're out to get you. Well, not everything has to be a conspiracy. I think this is a great thing. It, it cleans up a lot of stuff and it makes a lot of sense. And I just don't understand why we have to go through all this and get everyone all riled up and they can't do special events. They can't do this. And if they can, then maybe I'll vote no on that because, but if that's what they can't do and we're just getting people riled up, then we'll, we'll, we'll discuss all those things. But this is the maintenance agreement with the London Bridge Resort regarding maintenance responsibilities in the bridge water channel. That's what it's about. And it's, that's, it's a great thing. So I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I move to approve the maintenance agreement with London Bridge Resorts LLC regarding maintenance responsibilities in the bridge water channel.
Second. All right, we do have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second by Councilmember Moses, and we are ready to vote.
Motion carries with six council members voting yes and one council member recusal.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I got it. Thank you. All right, that will take us to item 7.3. This will be approved, the lease agreement with the London Bridge Resort LLC for the stage area under the London Bridge. This is the companion item. Ms. Gary?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council. This is a proposed lease agreement with the London Bridge Resort. For the lease of the property located under the eastern portion of the London Bridge containing the stage and then the stairwells on either side of the bridge. The purpose of this agreement is to facilitate the maintenance agreement that was just discussed by the city council. So in order for the London Bridge Resort to have its employees perform activities on this property, it'd be helpful for them to have a lease agreement that provides some nexus for them for liability purposes. The purpose, and that, that's, that's solely the purpose of it. It's also, as has been discussed, it's a bit of an island. It's a piece of city property that's surrounded by private property where the city has no dedicated parking. The city has no dedicated bathrooms, but we have, we have special events there. And it does require some coordination with those that do have bathrooms down there and do need to take care of them. And so there, there are some things that we can clean up and maybe do a little bit better with respect to special events in that area. And so we hope to improve that going forward as well. This agreement is also for a 20-year term, just like the maintenance agreement, but can be terminated by either party upon 180 days notice. I'm happy to answer. I know there's a lot of questions. I'm happy to answer all your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Gary. So I'll kind of reiterate here. This lease agreement, even if the London Bridge Resort wants to have an event on the bridge, they have to go through the city. They are not having access to the bridge that nobody else has. This is solely so that they will be covered under workman's comp when they're cleaning under the bridge with their employees. All the permitting stays exactly the same with the city. We just kind of had them at a, at a disadvantage because there's really no advantage to them to be cleaning this piece of property other than we said, look, we're going to take over this. What are you guys going to do for us? Maybe you should just continue to clean the channel. But we were able to negotiate with them and I appreciate Mr. Flatley doing the negotiations. Of course, as you know, the mayor, I had to recuse himself from this, so I sat in on these meetings. This is something where it's only so that his employees are covered should they get hurt. Otherwise, the city becomes liable for that. So we're entering into this agreement, but everything else stays the same. If somebody wants to have a wedding, as was discussed, whether it is a wedding planner or the London Bridge Resort or anybody else, they have to go through the permitting process through the city. Any fees that are collected go to the city. This is simply a maintenance agreement, so, or a lease agreement so that they can be covered when they're, under their cleaning the property. And as the city manager said, if any other entity would like to come to the city and say, we will clean that property for free, we would be more than happy to negotiate that with them. So with, with that, are there any comments from the council? Councilmember Lynn?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I have two questions. First of all, when you talk about the special permit, I don't see that anywhere in this agreement that they still have to do that. Like I'm, if that's what they're supposed to do, I don't see that anywhere in this agreement.
As far as the special event process?
Yeah, it doesn't say that anywhere that if the, if the new leasing wants to do that, it doesn't say anywhere in here that they still have to do that.
I think we can state it, it's just, it's not changing anything that, it's not changing the current process. I understand what you're saying. It doesn't specifically say that in there, but it's not granting to them any use for special events or any events or any activities beyond facilitating the maintenance activities in, in, that, that are outlined in the maintenance agreement. So it's not conferring onto them any other rights or responsibilities greater than what's contained in the maintenance agreement.
Okay. And then the second thing on number two, the use, if you go under 2.2, I'm really confused where it says city is responsible for all utilities and to, and all maintenance and repair. We just did a maintenance agreement. So why are we putting that in there that the city is responsible for it?
The city's still responsible for all the maintenance that isn't covered in the maintenance agreement. So they're doing trash removal and cleaning, but as far as if the sidewalk needs to be replaced, if something on the stage needs to be replaced, those types of, of other maintenance would be covered by the city.
That's way too vague for me. I'd like to see that way more spelled out because to me, when it says all maintenance, when we just said a maintenance agreement is really vague. And I, and again, I am really confused. I, I'm not confused. I, I'm understanding what the process is, but I think that this agreement should state in there that that process stays the same and that's nowhere in here. And I, I understand what you're saying that they still have to, but I'd like to see it in that I, I have an agreement with my landlord. I know what I can and can't do in there and it's very specific. And if they're, and that's saying that they're planning on putting any special events down there, that they're not going to go get a permit. But I'd like to see that they still have to do that.
Okay.
Can we add that?
Councilmember Moses?
Sorry.
No, sorry.
Can we add that language to the contract?
Yes, as far as, lessee would still be responsible for completing the city special event process for any event that it wished to hold on the property, something to that effect.
Be agreeable to that?
Do you want to step to the microphone to answer that question? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Flatley. Do you need the question repeated?
Oh, no, okay. My name's Mike Flatley. I'm one of the owners of the London Bridge Resort. And to answer the question, yes, we would. Um, and to answer the question, um, yes, we would agree to that.
Okay. I mean, I think it would help a lot of people sleep better at night. Is, as soon as I saw this, my immediately, I, I don't think there's any ill intentions by you, your company. You've been great actors for the city for how long? I love that we're, we're, we're doing this work to, to get us in the right place and to just clean up everything. So I don't think there's anything nefarious there. Um, and I don't think anything would change, I think, but one of, immediately as soon as I saw, I'm like, oh, we're releasing it, okay. What are the unintended consequences? That's always what I'm worried about, and I think that's what a lot of people are worried about too. And I think if we can add this, hopefully we'll help, uh, people sleep better at night and we can, uh, move on to 7.4.
If, if I may, also, we, we talked about this when we were doing the negotiations about unintended consequences, and that's why we can cancel this. If it doesn't work, we can cancel it. And, and I'll be the first one, Danny in Dallas, uh, if there, if the, you know, if there has been control lost and, and all that stuff, I'll be the first one to bring that up and say, hey, we need to cancel this contract and get a better one in place because whether it be London Bridge Resort or whoever owns that property moving forward, um, you know, if they're not good actors, I'll be the first one there with you because that is not an individual company to own, that is a public access that is for the city, so.
Mr. Flatley, before you sit down, would it be okay as well if I just clarify, instead of saying all maintenance that the city will be responsible, we'll just be responsible for all maintenance that isn't identified in the maintenance agreement? Would you be okay if I made that change as well to the agreement?
Sure, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Campbell?
Yes. Um, first and foremost, when I did ask questions about this, I was told that the prop, that they weren't even sure, I was told, we don't even really know who owns the stairs. I immediately was concerned about that. So I went and, uh, went to the Mojave County Board of Records and took a look at it and did a view of it. And so as I reviewed it, I saw for sure, this parcel does include the stairs. So that was exsaneed right off the top because I'm thinking, oh my goodness, if we made a mistake on the survey and we're only talking about the bridge portion and the stairs don't, aren't included, we're going to need to do eminent no bane or something to get those stairs back into place because I think when we were given the bridge, the intention was for the stairs to be with it. So under the direction of, um, people that I spoke to, I got misinformation from the get-go. So I ended up digging a little deeper than that. I think there's a miscommunication going on here. I wish they would have reached out to more people in the resort to have this conver, this would have probably all went away. In the uses department, it says lease property will be available for public use at all times. We have a document over there that they brought up to me today that states that that was part of the intent of the report. I would almost want to copy and paste that right into this agreement, so they look the same. If 12 years ago, we got a contract that said, we're going to give you this bridge, but in return, you must keep this open to the public at all times, this is what I think this lease agreement is missing. I know that I lease a lot of property, I know we lease property to the food bank and others, and we don't dictate when they open, we don't dictate when they close, we don't, we don't do any of that. So I just want it cleaned up a little bit. Again, what, um, Vice Mayor, I mean, excuse me, not Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Lynn said about, I was, it was kind of redundant, um, city is responsible for all utilities to all maintenance, it seems like we're addressing that, that's great. The other part that I had a little bit of a problem with where it says, the purpose of the agreement is to facilitate the activities required at the lease under the maintenance agreement and for the assistance of the leasing and the management and oversight of events on the property. That's when all of a sudden this maintenance, it's not a maintenance agreement anymore, it's a real lease agreement where they're going to oversee these, the properties, the events at the property. So, um, again, I don't think there's any ill intention, um, right, uh, 2.1, under use. Where use is a very big statement in the world of contracts today. If you get, go into a lease agreement with anybody, the use portion is very explicit so that we're not ever vague and in the middle of a lawsuit trying to dig ourselves out. So in this case, I'm just saying, let's dial it in, let's really understand what we expect out of this. It says, we can't build any structures there unless the city approves it. Why don't we just say, no structures will be allowed? Because who's the city? Are we coming back to city council if they want to build a structure? Um, I, I've, I've been a part of a lot of lease contracts and they're, like, it'll say, you cannot have a dog in your apartment. We take it pretty far. So again, I'm going to go over it, uses, lease property will be available for public use at all times. That's important to me as people are walking around down there, that should be part of it. Any private events must go through the same special events application process under the city's control, kind of like what you said, put it in here. City has a complete control over all events which include access to the stage. All special event permits will be given written notice to all property owners within the English Village prior to any event. I know when I was on Main Street, I sure wished, I knew if they were going to do a closure. Could the city enter into an agreement with current property owners for the assistance in public bathroom maintenance? For instance, maybe, there is a bathroom on the other side, can we talk to them? These are all the conversations that came to me in these last 72 hours, and I think they're all good comments and I would like them to be answered. Thus, maybe we should table this for a week or two and bring it back and just fix some of these things in here so we're not doing a big massive motion of trying to change what we're hearing, what I've heard. The question was parking in common, the curtain plan. I did reach out to, uh, Ms. Gary today and asked her about parking in common. So again, to say that I didn't go to the staff and I'm just giving out false information there when information's coming my way and I'm going back and rereading this over and over and over, trying to figure it out, all I'm saying is this just needs to be tabled, let's clean it up so everybody's happy and everybody's comfortable, and then let's all move on and smile and be happy. That's all I have to say.
Okay, if, if I'm, if I may address that, first of all, you said somebody brought you a document. Who brought you a document and do you have a copy of that document that you're referring to so that all the council members can see it? No, I'm, I'm addressing you.
They're in the audience, they said they had it today. They came and told you that earlier today. They have a document.
Well, they have a document. You said some, you said, they brought me a document, I'm just asking for clarification. Who brought you a document?
I did touch the document, yes, I did touch the document today.
No, that's not what I'm asking. I understand what you're saying now, what I was getting at, you said they, I was asking you, who brought you a document?
They want to share it with you on this agenda item, they're waiting to share it with you on this agenda item.
Okay, thank you. And then I, I have, when you, you talked about under the maintenance agreement, leasing agrees to maintain the property, the purpose of this agreement is to facilitate the activities required of the leasing under the management agreement and for the assistance of the leasing and the management oversight of the events on the property, which is what you said. I think the way I read that is that we are involved in that, not just them. It's us being involved in making sure that that is managed the way we want it to be managed. Am I correct, Ms. Gary?
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, the best way to keep out of a lawsuit is to have it all spelled out really clearly. So that's all I have to say with that. It is, I want it as clear as possible for the citizens of Lake Havasu City to understand that we are protecting the rights of the bridge that was gifted to us. That's all I'm asking for. And it seems like I'm kind of getting beat up on it and all I'm doing is asking questions.
And, and you are entitled to ask the questions, I was just clarifying. Does anyone else have any comments?
I have a question for the city, city manager and attorney. Do we own the stairs? Are we, do we, as a stat, does the city not know if we own the stairs?
Yes.
Is that information we're giving out?
The stairs, the, yes.
Both sides?
The stairs, both sides, yes.
Thank you.
Just curious, thank you.
Any other comments from council before I open up the public hearing? All right, this is the public hearing, if anyone would like to address the city council on this, please step forward, state your name for the record.
Hi, Dallas Finch. Okay, um, I do have this agreement, but you also have it because it was signed by the city attorney. So, um, I'm surprised that you don't have that in front of you. I only made one copy so I can send that around, but it should, it should have been really pertinent to this item agenda. So if I can make copies, I can leave this, whatever you'd like. It does, it was gifted, um, it's for the sole use, um, for the people, I, I do want to clean up this, this lease. It's very vague. It's unbelievable how vague it is because as it's written, um, with city council approval, they can build a kiosk, uh, the leasing can build a kiosk, they can do, uh, pretty much anything they want, park a big old boat sitting right there underneath the bridge, uh, block water access, who knows? I mean, it, uh, not that they would, I mean, but I want it in writing that they can't because 20 years from now, I'm not going to be here, Cal's not going to be here, you know, Mike probably is. But, um, you know, 20 years is quite a long time for two, for such a vague, um, uh, such a vague agreement. You know, it's, it seems like the city, uh, Kelly kept going back saying, uh, you know, we've been this, we've visited this before and this, and finally, let's clean it up and do it, this, and let's do it, let's clean it up and do it. Today's the day to clean it up. So, um, let's table this, clean it up, and I'm happy. You know, I, I'm happy. I have nothing, uh, ill to say about the London Bridge Resort. I just would have loved to have the same, I mean, you got to put it out there if you say if, if another entity is gonna, uh, wants to clean the stairs and clean it, okay, well, put it out there. It was never put out. I, I heard of it yesterday. Um, the, the property owner adjacent, um, has never heard of it. You know, so I called them and they said, oh, well, find out about it. Well, you know, 13 hours, 14 hours is not long enough when you've been negotiating obviously for a few weeks. Well, why isn't, why isn't, why, why am I not afforded the same or anybody else? Uh, I do have a question on the maintenance part of it, uh, in this agreement. So, um, I heard that the reason why we have to go into an agreement is why Mr. Dolan was, it was brought to your attention for the workman's comp? Okay, so the London Bridge Resort would carry the workman's comp? Correct. But the city is there to maintain the bridge, the utilities, if cracks in the concrete or anything like that, wouldn't they carry workman's comp? So it seems to me that it's always, already is there. So, huh? For your employees, okay.
Don't carry workers' comp for London Bridge Resort employees.
Gotcha, okay. So I stand corrected.
Yeah, we will not insure a private entity's employees.
So, again, it's, it's, it's really strange for the city to enter into a, a lease agreement where the leasing has, the way it's written, just clean it up, please. I'm just saying, I'm not against you, I'm not against any of it. I just want it spelled out so every, both parties are protected. And I don't, I don't see why you would be against that.
I'm sorry, if I may, so we have already agreed to make some changes that have specifically been brought up, so do you, do you have some specific, I mean, you keep saying clean it up and we have taken some steps to try to clean it up, and I think everybody's willing to do that?
Great. I have 14 hours of looking at it. I don't have enough time. You've had weeks.
That's fine, I understand. I just didn't know if right now, if you have specifics that you'd like to offer, but if not, that's, I understand.
Yeah, let me, let me, I mean, I just barely got these, you know what I mean? And just, I'm highlighting as fast as I can, watching the clock and now I'm here talking, you know? So please, please, let's table it, let's, let me have some time and the others have some time to clean it up and make it a, an ironclad, so we don't have to go back to this again. Um, we, I, I think all of you would want an ironclad agreement where both parties are, it's a win-win. Am I wrong? David?
Oh, we, we do, that's why we said we would make the changes.
Great.
And, and one of the other things I said, we, we tried to consider all of the unintended consequences, and of course, sometimes there may be one, that's why we have an out.
All right.
If it doesn't work, we can cancel the contract.
So I was wondering, why weren't we included? Did you not think that, think of us or what was it?
Well, actually, we were holding the resort over the barrel since we were taking over part of what they used to do, saying, okay, we're taking this from you, what are you going to do for us? And that was there.
Okay, so what is the, what, I, I guess, I wonder what the gain is for the resort to do that?
There isn't one. There really is not.
So they wanted 20 years of no gain? That's what my question is.
You are absolutely correct, there is no gain for them to do this.
Okay, so for 20 years?
And then they can, they can bow out too, just like we can if it doesn't work for them.
Okay, that's what, what I'm saying, okay, have it do a year, go a year, see how it goes. Hey, why not?
We could go 90 days, 180 days, and then if it's not right, we could, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, um, then we could bow out.
Right.
Um, 20 years is irregardless a little bit. I mean, we, we can be done with this in, in six months, um, with how this is stated. I've heard some of your concerns and, and we've put that, those changes in there, I've heard some of Nancy's concerns, and I'm reading 2.1 and it says, the city will advise the leasing of all special events to occur on the property. That's not asking them for permission, that's telling, hey, this is happening, and then it even goes further, the leasing will assist with the necessary accommodations. We are dictating to them how we're going to use this property. They just need this little piece of paper so that they can cover their butts on an insurance program. If it's anything more than that, if there is an edge to be gained, I'll be right there with you. But I don't see it. I, I mean, you, I, you can see conspiracy and you can see ill intent in any contract you would put in front of me.
Oh.
But we have the safeguards in place to be able to get out of this if we need, for one, and for two.
Cameron.
It, it's, it's there. I, I, I don't see any, any disadvantage to the city at this point. Like David said, I, he, David was the one at the negotiating table, it wasn't Cal versus Cal kind of deal, he stepped in for the city and he negotiated pretty strong on this as far as what I'm looking at and, and what we're, what the city is going to gain. And, um, but if there's, if there's ill intent, if there's something nefarious going on where now, you know, the evil empire owns the bridge, I'll, I'll be right there with you, pitchfork in hand.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And just to be clear, I'm not, I am, I, I'm not opposed to.
I know you're not.
I'm not, I'm not singling out London Bridge Resort.
I don't believe you are.
20 years later, you know, who knows? And all I'm saying is.
If, if, if there's ill intent in 180 days, we can get out of it, no problem.
Well, all I'm saying is, is let's clarify it and put it down word for word in, in the agreement.
I'm hearing you, I'm hearing you, and I think we did it.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to, uh, address the council on this item? I think the Finch brothers are tag-taking us.
I could hear the collective, oh, man.
No, it's all good.
So, uh, just some clarification. I think, I think what my brother and I were scared of, or, or what riled us up, was, uh, we were never brought to the table and we, and we have a direct impact. I would even argue more of an impact because of where our parking lot is, where, where the bridge is situated on the north side of the village and where our business is, as opposed to farther away and where the London Bridge Resort is. We are more impacted than the London Bridge Resort. And the fact that we did not have any knowledge or any say, that's what has, has stirred us up and, and it scares us. I mean, this is our livelihood, this is our, this is our business. And so when we read things in the lease agreement, uh, that says that the, that the leasing, uh, is, is involved in the management and oversight of events on the property, that's
and oversight of events on the property, that's what gets us, wow, they can do whatever they want, because they are going to have oversight on every event that happens down there. You know, that, that, that scares us, because the resort has a competing business in every aspect down there, both food and beverage, retail, everything, right? So that kind of riles us up a little bit. So it wasn't just, it's not misinformation, it was, we were riled up on our own. The, I do have a copy of, of the document. This is the dedication of, the deed of dedication from VRE to the city. I would, I don't know the process of getting this to you, but I would love for you to have it. The deed of dedication says that this is deeded to the city solely for public use as open space. And so there is no need to enter into a, the, the easement is already there. The city owns the property. So I can give you, I can, I, I don't know what the process is.
I, we won't need that. We can get that from the city attorney. That's not an issue. My question was, what document was she referring to, not that? So now I know.
Let me just clarify really quick while you're up there. So he's talking about the city owns and the easement. So the city owns that piece of property under the bridge. We're not asking for an easement for the, on the property that we own. We're asking for an easement along the channel of the property owned by the London Bridge Resort. Does that make sense?
I'm sorry.
I just, okay, so the city, we, we understand. We own that property right underneath, directly under the bridge. We're not asking for an easement for the property that we own. We're asking for an easement from the London Bridge Resort for the property that starts from the bridge down.
I understand that. That, I'm wondering why--
You keep saying that, why we're asking for, on the property that we own. We accepted the dedication of the property, of the property under the bridge.
Correct.
And so it's still open. There's nothing in the lease agreement that closes it to the public. It's open to the public. There's nothing in the dedication that restricts the city's ability to do whatever we want with that property, as long as we're keeping it open. It is, it is open. There's, there's nothing in the lease agreement that closes that property to the public.
My question is, is, is the agreement, or the negotiations was for the, to gain the easement, correct? But this little piece of property was lumped into it. It's kind of like it was, it was snuck in. It was, this piece of property was not necessary, because the easement was already there. And that's the argument that I'm getting from the council, that we needed the easement in the channel. Hundred percent agree. Why was this piece of property that affects my business lumped into that? That's, that's my concern.
Vice Mayor, question, please, for him?
Sure, go ahead.
Do you know why, why is the event portion of this even put in there? I just think we talked about a whole maintenance agreement, and now we're talking about events too. That's the part that's confusing me. Is it confusing you?
Absolutely, especially when it's said right in the agreement that, that the leasing will have management and oversight of events on the property. And then the, the question is, is if it is, if there is a lease agreement, is it no longer public property? Is it then private property? Don't need a permit for private property. If I'm the leasing, I should be able to do whatever I want. And there's our fear of having events that take all day, all night, you know, and it's not in the agreement, and we were never asked our input or anything. So yeah, we're a little fearful. We would love to have a seat at the table so that we can address these unintended consequences, so that, you know, we can all be at ease. We're not against it. We're just, we're just afraid of this agreement and the verbiage that's in it. So if it is private property now, because we have entered into a lease, you don't need a permit to have an event on private property.
Vice Mayor, I just don't see in here where it says it's open to the public anywhere in this lease.
We, did we add that? Wasn't that part of what we added?
We're not sure what we're adding. We're not sure if we're tabling it. We're not sure. That's where we're at.
I'm a hundred percent sure.
All right, hang on. Have we answered your questions? Have you made all, we're, we're still in the public comment portion of this, and, and people are talking. We need to finish the public portion comment, and then we can bring it back here. But do you have any other comments, or?
I would leave it there. I would just love to table it so that our, our concerns can at least be considered.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the counsel on this
Good evening. I'm Bonnie Toy, and I have, well, an agreement with them, because the contract does not say that you have to go through the city to lease the stage. I mean, if I want to rent the stage for a day right now, I would go to the city, correct? All the way up until November thirtieth, I would contact the city if I want to rent the stage. As of December first, it does not say where I would go to rent the stage. It doesn't say that in your contract at all. It says that the resort is the oversight of the agreement. Now, I did have a slight issue, and maybe I'm slightly offended, because someone, a couple people keep mentioning conspiracy theories. And funny thing about that, your contract is available for reading at the city's website underneath the city council agenda portion of the website. And if I go to the city website and I share that link to anybody, I am not giving false information, or making anybody scared, or trying to cause problems. I am simply sharing the city's information from the city website. And I just want to say that to be, have to repeatedly hear, hear that people are throwing out conspiracy theories. Conspiracy theories, I'm telling you, if I hear that word one more time, it was really frustrating, because I'm not, and I don't think anybody else, to my knowledge, was throwing out conspiracy theories, because the information, I'm really sorry to tell you, is on the government website, free to get to. You don't have to access it through the newspaper or through anybody else. Every single citizen can go on to their internet and to their phone and access it straight there from their phone. It's not a conspiracy theory to read the government's page. Just want to say that. I don't, and I've read that contract like ten times since Thursday, Wednesday? I think Wednesday. I've read it like ten times, maybe twenty times. I don't understand the wording of it. Where am I supposed to go December first to rent the stage?
That's your question?
Yes.
The same place you do now, to the city.
Okay, then can the resort at their website all of a sudden decide that they want to lease the stage out for whatever events that they wish to, and put that on their website? Hey, come and host an event at the stage?
No, they cannot.
It does not say that in the contract.
And it doesn't say that they can either.
Exactly.
They can't. It's our property.
It doesn't say that they can't.
Well, it also says that, I'm not going to get into that argument with you.
Thanks.
It's, it's not, you can't put every contingency into a contract, put it that way. It's still the same. Nothing is changing, other than they're going to clean the property. This is what we're trying to do. They're going to clean the property. We're doing a lease agreement for them to be covered under workman's comp. That's it. Nothing more, nothing less.
Workman's comp. I was just curious about that. Also, sorry. If somebody that works for the London Bridge Resort while working falls, doesn't, aren't they covered under London Bridge Resort workers' comp? And if a citizen were to fall under the stage because of something wrong down there, isn't the city already covering that, whether it's a citizen or an employee of somebody else?
Yes, but if they're doing city work on city property that's not leased to the resort, then their workman's comp doesn't cover it.
But some insurance covers it, correct?
That's what we're trying to get away from, is the city being responsible for employees' injuries, other employees. We don't have other employees on our workman's comp.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
Mike Flatley. Just wanted to clarify that the London Bridge Resort is just looking to work with the city. We have absolutely no angle or edge. We're trying to get out of this, as some have made it clear. They think we might be looking at it that way. As far as the events go, we have a beautiful wedding facility up by the golf course. We have no intention on having weddings down. There are other events. And if we do have events, we're going to have to go through the same exact process we go through right now. Just this past week, and we had the festival of lights, we had to apply to the city, and had to get approved. So none of that's going to change whatsoever. So just wanted to clarify, there's no specific angle we're trying to get, and we have no intentions on doing anything in a, in a privileged matter by getting this agreement. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Vice Mayor, question?
You have a question for Mr. Flatley?
I do. It says, the purpose of this agreement is to facilitate the activities, again, I'm reading again, and for the oversight of events. What does that mean?
Specifically for the oversight of events, I don't have a specific answer for that. All I can say is that it's specifically to maintain, for the maintenance of that area.
Well, why do we even have anything about event oversight in here, then? This is where the big confusion lies. If we just had the maintenance agreement, remove that you guys are going to do the oversight events, none of this conversation would, we wouldn't have this conversation. I know that's what the Finch brothers are worried about right now. They don't know, and, and I know that Ms. Toy is wondering, where do I go? Because when I lease a property, that's now my property. I insure it, I maintain it, I take care of it, unless the city says, hey, we're going to do a public-private relationship with you, and we're going to put together a contract that is going to facilitate and take care of everybody. But what we're dealing with right now, that's confusing everybody, and it's not a conspiracy theory, because it states in here that you will facilitate the events. And that's my question to you. Are you planning on facilitating events there? Mr. Vice Mayor-- Can I answer, can I get an answer?
If it's a legal question, can we get it from the attorney?
I'm trying to get the city attorney--
None of us are attorneys.
Says right in the contract, facilitate events.
So let's let the city attorney answer your contract question.
Let me read the whole, the whole section that, that is here. So the purpose of the agreement is to facilitate the activities required of the leasing under the maintenance agreement, so that's one section, and then for the assistance of leasing in the management and oversight events of the property. It is not meant to convey the management or oversight responsibilities to the leasing, but is to the assistance of the city of the leasing for those purposes. Then the agreement goes on to state, there are no publicly owned bathrooms or parking lots to accommodate events that occur on the property. City will advise leasing of all the special events to occur on the property, and the leasing will assist with the necessary accommodations. That is the purpose of that phrase. It is not saying that leasing is, is going to be responsible for the management or oversight. All it is saying is that the leasing will assist in the management and oversight, meaning as you go on to the other, that we're going to let them know, hey, a special event is going to occur there, and they're going to make sure that their bathrooms are cleaned and stocked, because that has been an issue, and we're just going to let them know about those special events that are going to occur there. Because as we had mentioned, it's an island. It's, it's not surrounded by city property. It's surrounded by private property, and by having those events, there's impacts in there. And so that's, that's the purpose, that's the intent of that section. If we need to change that language, we can, but it's not meant to convey any rights or responsibilities onto the leasing. It is just to have the leasing assist the city with the special events that the city permits to happen on that property.
Vice Mayor, question to attorney?
Please.
You just said to help them maintain bathrooms, but the only bathrooms that I know of are on the other side. What bathrooms are we talking about, that you just mentioned that we would help them, like to leasing, to make sure the leasing is going to maintain the bathrooms? Is the leasing maintaining bathrooms? I didn't think there was any--
They have bathrooms that are located within the proximity of the stage.
Okay, thank you.
And so when we have events there, people use their bathrooms. But if they don't know that events are happening, they can't stock their bathrooms. So we, we just need to communicate a little bit better, so they know about that. And so that's helping to facilitate the special events on that property.
Wouldn't that be the same on the other side, too? Because there is a public bathroom on, or, I don't know if it's public or not. The other side, there's a bathroom. Or do, we are contacting them. That was one of the requests that I said, too, is make sure that everybody in that area knows when there's an event. I don't know why it feels to everybody here that I'm, I'm asking for crazy requests, and I'm just basically making comments of, how do we make it really clean? That got confusing, because in there it says they don't own any bathrooms. So basically, it would be to leasing, to help, you know, just to be aware that there is events down there. I think everybody down under the bridge would like to know that as well, from their parking, to the resort, to, everybody wants to know if there's going to be event, and where they need to park, or what needs to be done. But I do believe that when the, the, the bridge was donated to us, or given to us, they had very strong verbiage in there that it needs to stay open to the public, and that's the part in here that I don't read. But we're going to hopefully address that.
Yep. So as far, I don't disagree with anything that you said, but that's just not a part of this agreement. So I'm, I'm only talking to what is owned and going to be assisted by, by the London Bridge Resort.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Dolan? Oh, Councilmember Lynn?
Can, can we just take out that, this, this entire part that says the purpose of this agreement is to facilitate the activities required of the leasing? Can we just take that out, including there are no publicly owned bathrooms, because I don't even know why that's in there? Like, who cares if that's in there? And just go down to the city will advise leasing of all special events to occur. And that way, everybody knows. It doesn't change. I don't, just take that whole paragraph out of there. Why does it have to be in there? Just take it out, so that it doesn't confuse you. And then I have one other question, and like I said, I don't think that there's any benefit or anything, but I know that we talk about, they cannot put any permanent improvements on the property. What would stop them, not saying that they would, I'm just asking, to go down there and put a banner down there that says, come up to Martini Bay, come and stay at London Bridge Resort, and put that down there? Because they, they now are the leasing of that property. That's not a permanent structure. It's a banner. And to what I'm just saying, you know, the other businesses that are down there, they would maybe want that opportunity too. So I'm just asking, what is stopping them from doing that?
The city would stop them from doing that, if they were to put something up that we would simply take that down, or have them take it down. They're not authorized under this agreement to do anything other than what the agreement says they're authorized to do. So all of these ancillary things that are coming up, they're not authorized to do that. They're not authorized to have events. They're not authorized to put banners. They're not authorized to put signs. None of that is what they're authorized to do. So if they did that, the city would simply remove it. And if it became a problem, we would terminate the agreement.
So could we just take that portion out and say exactly what you just said? That this, take that whole garbage out there. Talk about the bathrooms, everything, and say exactly what you said. You cannot hold any events. You cannot put any signage. You can do nothing but clean it for us in agreement. That's simple for everybody.
Yes, I mean, we can take that portion out, if that is the, if that's the desire of council. And, I mean, we'll have to go back to the resort and make sure that they're comfortable with that as well. But, I mean, if we were to do that, we get to say the purpose of this agreement is to facilitate the activities required of the leasing under the maintenance agreement only.
Vice Mayor? Mr. Dolan?
This is also why we have an attorney for the city. This is, they get paid to do this. I'm not an attorney. I, just because I interpret something my way in a contract, like I said, everybody can go out and find this document online. It doesn't make us attorneys. And because we think something means something, doesn't necessarily it means that. So I think we've answered the questions with the attorney. You know, there's nothing in there that says they can't paint the bridge yellow. There's nothing that says they can't, you know, hang, you know, there's so much that says it can't do, but that's also not what contracts do. And the city attorney is telling us that it's fine, and it's good. So I'm going to go with the city attorney on that. I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the lease agreement with the London Bridge Resort with the changes we made about twenty-five minutes So if you want to read those, just to confirm it. There, I believe there were, there were ones we made like twenty minutes ago that we all somewhat had a consensus for.
That's true.
No.
No, I did close the public comment. I did not? No?
No, okay, that was closed.
Then I--
Motion fails, and then go back to the public comment.
Yep. So we'll go back to public comment. I apologize. I thought I had.
Hello, David Diaz, Lake Havas, resident. You know, I had a wise mentor once tell me, sometimes we have to slow down to speed up. So I think on this situation, it should be tabled. I appreciate Ms. Gary's writing the notes down and so forth, and that's good, listening to everyone's comments, but it's going to take some cleanup on this contract. I showed it to a lawyer friend of mine that I've known for many, many years, and there's all kinds of holes in it. And you can't put, and I agree with Mr. Lane, you can't put, and Mr. Dolan, you can't put everything in the contract. But you could clean it up to where it's pretty much there. Facilitate the events, the oversight of events, in putting that facilitates the oversight of events. That's, it's plain English. It means you're going to manage the events that occur down under, under that area. Take it out. It was not in there. And I think Mrs. Gary did a perfect thing just now, where she said just the maintenance part of it, and that's it. Just clean it up. Sometimes less is more. And there's, there's too many holes in this, in this contract. I read it too many times. So I think, I think the prudent move by this council, that you guys could do what you want to do, is to table it. Unless, unless there's a clock, it's ticking down. It has to be done by a certain time. Not sure. But if that's not the case, I think it should be tabled. It should be cleaned up. I think everyone on both sides is high, we're going to be happy. And then the optics are cleaned up, and it's, everyone goes home and is happy, and they're happy. And it's not a conspiracy theory. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, is there anyone else who would like to address the counsel on this item? Could have swore I did this already. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Are there any other comments? Ms. Gary, do you have a comment?
Vice Mayor, if I could just, I'll just go over the changes that I have kind of collected before anybody makes any motions. And so, one, we revised two point two, where it says all maintenance. We're going to clarify that. So it's all maintenance-- that, so it's all maintenance, except what's included in the maintenance agreement, that the resort will be taken care of. We've also clarified that the lessee shall go through the city's special event permit process for any events to be held by lessee on the property. So those were the two first ones that we made. I would also suggest that we can just remove the portion that talks about the events, and so the purpose of the agreement would be to facilitate the activities required by lessee under the maintenance agreement only. And then, the city will still advise the lessee of the special events to occur, and the lessee will assist with the necessary accommodations. And then just one last sentence, "The property shall remain open to the public."
Okay.
Vice Mayor? I'd like to make a motion to approve the lease agreement with the London Bridge Resort, with the revision to 2.2, this, changing the special events as discussed by the city attorney, remove the portion that talks about the events, and that it remains open to the public.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Dolan, a second by Councilmember Moses.
Vice Mayor, may I make a comment before we vote?
Please.
I just want to, just so everyone knows, we, a lot of talk about tabling, which I, I understand your concern there. I think this is a good move forward, we've made those changes. We still have to ratify this at the next, next meeting, correct?
Ratify?
I mean, this comes before us twice?
No.
This is the, the one and only shot?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I mean, I, I thought it was coming back a second time, because most things do, but, but I'm, I'm completely good with the changes we made on that. So thank you for making those changes, Kelly.
All right, we are ready to vote.
Motion carries with four councilmembers voting aye, two councilmembers voting no, and a councilmember recusal.
All right, then I will turn the meeting back over to our mayor, Cal Sheehy.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lane. We'll now move on to item 7.4, which is approve the purchase of a 2024 Chevrolet Suburban LT four-wheel-drive vehicle from Midway Chevrolet Company. Mr. Young?
Good evening, council, mayor. I'm here to ask for your approval for the purchase of the 2024 Chevy Suburban. This will be a city hall pool vehicle to escort larger groups to training, to tours, council members around. It will be used by many people and left in the city hall pool. We are purchasing this through a cooperative agreement with Midway Chevrolet for the price of $71,575.29.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Young?
Mayor, yes. Vice Mayor, question. Who again is using this?
It would be to the city, the city hall pool. Anybody can actually use it to get bigger groups or crews to training, city council around, if guests come into town that need to be shared around. It's, it's a bigger vehicle that can hold up to, I believe, seven passengers.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions for Mr. Young? Councilmember Lynn?
How many passenger seat is it?
I believe it's seven. Off the top of my head, it might be eight.
So what are we currently using now?
I think we have a smaller Tahoe, an older Tahoe.
And how many is that seat?
I believe six.
So we're going to, how often are we, how often are we giving people rides that are over six? Like, this is just a big purchase, and I'm just trying to figure out if it's worth spending this much money, for how often are we using it? And if we need something bigger for those times, wouldn't it be just cheaper to rent something?
If you may, Councilmember Lynn, so this particular item is necessary. So I actually don't use a fleet vehicle very often, I usually use my own car, with, without reimbursement, only because the process is, is so hard to try to do it, so I'd rather just take my own car. But when we do want to use it, I would say probably nine times out of 10, the Tahoe is already booked. And so we have a Tahoe, and we have a Fusion here. If we need to take, as Mr. Young had mentioned, if we need to take the council, if we need to take any groups on, on tours throughout our community, we bring in people that are going to be bidding a project, and we need to all be together to have a conversation as, as we're going. This would provide that. The Tahoe would stay in the fleet, so we would then be able to take the Tahoe and this vehicle, and we'd be able to accommodate all. Many of you know, sometimes at tri-city councils, we're taking three or four cars to Bullhead City or Parker, excuse me, Bullhead City or Kingman, which this would alleviate some of those concerns. And obviously, the mileage reimbursement cost to send employees out on, on mileage or rental car, it's generally less expensive for a rental car than it is for mileage reimbursement. But still, with that, it's, it's coordinating getting the rental car and all those pieces together. So this is an approved item in the budget that we discussed during our budget work sessions throughout this last year.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do we have any idea how often that happens? That we need to use this vehicle? I, I understand what you told me, who use it, but how often are we doing that? I just know that I've been on council for 10 years, and, I mean, I, I can carpool, I can, and I choose not too many times, but I'm just curious of what that looks like.
Sure, yeah, I know, it, it happens quite often. So I mean, I just talked about the experience from the council perspective. So I would say, multiple times in a month. Mr. Knutson, maybe from a staff perspective, you would have some additional information on that.
Sure. Mayor Sheehy, Councilmember Lynn. Yeah, so we talked about it just in tri-city council, and, and as the council utilizes these vehicles, as we, we go at large groups, and different trainings that occur, whether it's in Phoenix or otherwise. Ms. Bracamonte utilizes our vehicles for the transport of our Hayek kids, when we have different meetings that they attend. And then, if we have a group of admin services staff that's going to, to a training, they're going to, they can't, you know, they can't fit into the Ford Fusion, that vehicle will be used. So, without exact numbers in front of me, it's several times a month.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Young, before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council, for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Please.
I move to approve the purchase of a 2024 Chevrolet Suburban LT four-wheel-drive vehicle from Midway Chevrolet Company, one LLC, in the amount of $71,575.29. Subject to release of the manufacturer's official 2024 published pricing and discount off of the manufacturer's retail price, as amended by the Arizona State Purchasing Office, and authorized the city manager to approve the amended adjustment if necessary.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Koch, and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. Then item 7.5 is approve the purchase of one 2024 Ford Maverick four-wheel-drive from Santan Auto Partners LLC. Mr. Young?
Yes, good evening. We're looking at replacing a 2006 Chevy Uplander with 101,000 miles, 37 points, to remind of the point system. We look at the year, the age, the repairs that have been made, the miles, the hours that have been logged on it, the damages that have been done. This van is well overdue, and the new superintendent for parks agreed for a cheaper vehicle to stay under budget, and he, and he went with this Ford Maverick. So, we are doing it through a cooperative with Santan Ford, and we're asking you to approve the purchase of the Ford Maverick 2024 for $30,244.45.
Thank you. And, Mr. Young, this would be the first, won't be the first, but it'd be a conversion from Chevy trucks primarily, is what we had been purchasing, to this Ford Maverick?
Actually, we stepped into Chevy for just a minute, and the Ford window opened on this one, so we, we got the Ford.
Okay, so vehicle maintenance would be educated.
We have both Chevys and Fords in our fleet, so yes.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Are there any other questions from members of council, for Mr. Young?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Lynn?
What do we use this vehicle for?
This would be the superintendent of parks vehicle. He'd be using it all, all the time, all day long, actually running from parks and all the jobs that he does.
Okay, so, and it's got 101,000 miles on it right now?
The Uplander, yes, and I apologize for not getting you the data sheet. 101,000 miles, 37.1 points, and we normally discard it 32 points, or recommend for replacement 32.
Sorry, I'm sorry. What type of maintenance have we had to do on it?
I do not have that information in front of me, but I can get it for you.
Are there any additional questions for Mr. Young, for members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
I move to approve the purchase of one 2024 Ford Maverick front-wheel-drive vehicle in the amount of $30,244.45 from Santan Auto Partners LLC, subject to release of the manufacturer's official 2024 published pricing, and discount off the manufacturer's retail price as amended by the Arizona State Purchasing Office, and authorize the city manager to approve an amended adjustment if necessary.
Second. We have a motion for Vice Mayor Lane, and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our public hearings. Item eight is our call to the public. This is an opportunity where citizens have to address the city council on items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. These items would not be on the agenda. Your comments are limited to three minutes. Again, there's a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have time, yellow means one minute's remaining, red means that your three minutes is up. We do ask that whatever comments that you may have, you direct yourself and your comments directly to the city council on those items. The council cannot have a two-way discussion during this process, we can listen intently, and respond to criticism if, if necessary during this process, but we would listen to each comment that comes forward. You don't have to sign up for a call to the public, but we did have two citizens do so, so we'll start with those two, and then we'll open it up to the rest. So we'll start with Ms. Joan DeZuro.
Joan DeZuro, D-Z-U-R-O. Good evening, council and mayor. As the leaders of our community, you are responsible for keeping our roads repaired, our water and sewer systems operating correctly, managing infrastructure projects, keeping our parks good shape and safe, supporting our safety officers and making sure they have the training and equipment they need to serve our community effectively. And you handle all of these things very well. There is an area, however, the government was never structured to handle, and has not been successful in helping on a consistent basis. And that is the area of lifting up our residents when they hit hard times. God has instructed all of us that he expects us to reach out and give a helping hand when our neighbors need it. And I believe Americans, and especially Lake Havasu residents, are some of the greatest people for doing this, and we've seen this with many of the organizations here tonight. Toward that end, we at the Lake Havasu Republican Women's Club wanted to let you know what we have accomplished over this past year to augment what the city does to lift up our residents. With me tonight is our president, Carol Pruitt, and Chair of Caring for America, the committee that spearheads these programs, Ganel Cruz. In 2023, the women and men of our club hosted a shoe drive for Havasu Clothes Closet for the children who are in need of new shoes going back to school. 170 pairs of shoes were donated, as well as $600 in cash. A $1,000 scholarship was awarded to four Lake Havasu City senior girls to help them as they continue their educational journey. A pajama drive for children coming out and going into the foster care program in Lake Havasu, resulting in 222 pairs of pajamas, and 75 handmade pillowcases were donated so children had something other than trash bags to put their personal belongings in and take with them. We pass a bucket each month for military moms and have donated $3,908 so far. We conduct a basket raffle each month with the proceeds going to New Horizons, and this year was able to give them $3,020. Our annual food drive raised 86 pounds of food and $1,600 in cash. We have adopted 125 forgotten seniors, and they each will receive special Christmas presents to let them know that they are an important part of our community, and that people are thinking of them. So as you can see, we also care about our community, and working with all of you here on the council, we continue to make Lake Havasu the best community there is. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jamie Bernier. Did I get close?
Close enough. Jamie Bernier.
Excellent, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Jamie Bernier, I'm the Grants Coordinator for Mojave County Community Services, and I'm here today to make the public aware of an upcoming opportunity for nonprofits and special districts, seeking federal funding assistance from Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, using Community Development Block Grant, CDBG funds, from Regional Account. CDBG funds must be used to benefit low and moderate income persons in areas, alleviate slum and blight, and address an urgent need. Mojave County Community Services will be holding a public hearing on Thursday, January 11th, 2024, at 5:30 PM, to receive applications for funding assistance and gather citizen input on the use of these CDBG funds. It'll be located in the Swaro Conference Room of the Mojave County Administration Building and Community Services Department, that's located at 700 West Beale Street in Kingman. The flyer presented to councilmembers tonight is available this evening. It's also going to be displayed in Mojave County newspapers, social media, media press release, community outreach centers, as well as the Mojave County Community Services webpage, and you can access that at www.mojave.gov. You're going to want to click on the government at the top left, select the community services link under the department section, and the CDBG information will be there for everyone to see and utilize. For pre-application or more information, you can reach out to me, Jamie Bernier, at 928-753-0723, and my work extension is 4215. I'd love to thank you for allowing me to use this public platform to get the information out.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our citizens that have signed up. Would anyone else like to address the city council during Call to the Public? If so, just please make ready to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hi, I would just like to make a suggestion, because I don't like to be called a conspiracy theorist before sharing information, and if the city would use their social media platforms that they had available, when issues come up that are going to be at your city council meeting, perhaps if the city were to post the links and all the information necessary for regular citizens to read the information for themselves, because sometimes people get busy and forget, or they don't know to go look at the city's government website, that your city's social media pages could give the citizens who use social media a way to read that information. By the way, I thought that the city council agenda was supposed to be posted at the city library. When I was at the city library today, I did not see it posted anywhere at the library, on their bulletin board. So I'm just letting you know, maybe the library forgot to post it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during Call to the Public? Seeing none, we'll close the Call to the Public. Moving on to item nine is our current events, are there any council committee reports? Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last night, we had a meeting with Parks and Rec Committee, and we had a gentleman from the Pickleball Association come and say that they have $65,000 to put towards lighting for the pickleball courts. And so, the, the committee is requesting that during the budget process, Mr. City Manager, that we work with the Pickleball Association to see if we can help facilitate those lights and get that money as a donation from them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lane. Councilmember Moses?
Thank you. I'll give you guys an update on the PED. We just did our annual audit, and came back with no issues from the independent, you know, CPA. And then there's also another exciting project that I'll share a little bit about. I don't want to give all the details, because I'll leave it up to the, the actual developer that's, you know, going out there, but Star Cinemas has been, as with most movie theaters But Star Cinemas has been, as with most movie theaters all over the country, have been going through some tough times. And so there is, uh, the, the PED was instrumental in, in kind of the assistance with a, uh, with a sale and, and to getting that switched over to a new owner who's going to reimagine the movie theater with a big, uh, national brand restaurant coming in and, and do lots of different things. There's, they're going to keep the movie theater open, so we, we didn't lose any jobs. We didn't lose any business. Um, they're just going to, um, slowly reimagine half the movie theater into, um, some activity-type centers. And so, uh, it's really exciting going up there. And the PED did a great job kind of getting, um, helping facilitate that. Um, and then also, where they're kind of excited about this is the expansion of Nomadic. We've had, um, a lot of success, um, with, um, uh, the office space rentals. The, the big offices are completely full. They still have floating desks around that are, that are vacant for people if they're coming into town and stuff like that and just want to grab it for a couple of days. So they still have that, but they need more office space.